Okay, it's seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where allegiance stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, could you leave the white in the room tonight?
Sure. Here board, please allow us to make the city's best decisions for all citizens involved. Please pray for the council members that are feeling ill tonight and that surgery taken place, they may go well. In your name we pray.
Yeah, call the board.
Mr. Clement, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Childs, Mr. Dunkey.
Here.
Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Ms. Sonnen.
Yes.
Okay, motion to excuse Mr. Clement and Mr. Childs from tonight's meeting. So move.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dunkey.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any discussion on said minutes? Motion to adopt, or motion to approve. So move, second.
And Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any citizens' comments tonight? Go ahead.
One and two compliments and one thing that I really would like done. First of all, the red paint that's on the curbs by the fire hydrants is a real plus. Secondly, the leaf crew does fine work. You call them and there they are, your leaves are gone. And third is an old age complaint. When I come in off the highway and come in that way, the lighting is really, really bad and the lines on the road are basically non-existent. And I know the road's gonna be paved, but maybe from cammies to where the grass starts right here, I'd be willing to be got me down the bank, the big one right down the middle, just enough so that when I come in off that, I can see. The other night there was a huge semi there and he was just parked there for a while and I didn't know if I'd go around and tell how far over was he really. But it would really be nice to have at least one middle line. Two on the side would be fine. And I've gotta say, when the cars were in that little park, you could see better, but I don't want them back.
Well, just a quick question for clarification. Was it 691 exit coming up that way on Canal? Is that where?
Yeah, she said past Tandem, wasn't she?
Okay, okay.
Cammies, right cammies, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the other one is not bad, but it right there, there are some lights, but they don't shine there.
As a matter of fact, we just got a call from a fair board member from Athens, the Athens Fair Board, who asked if we would be interested in getting on a free grant to have the lights replaced with LED lights at zero cost to city. So I handed the information over to Mr. Kajimi and most likely he'll get his lights replaced.
That sounds wonderful, but still a center line would be good.
Number two.
Yes, sir.
Jason Cole, our service director, has been diligently looking for people to paint at this late time of the year. Finally found a contractor that's gonna come and do it and it'll probably be done, I'd say, within two or three weeks. So it's coming. So it's just, we got a little late in the game and we didn't realize that they're not reluctant to paint because they're worried about guaranteeing the paint. And I said, we only need it to last a year because the road is gonna be resurfaced. So then they said, okay, then we'll come.
Yeah, because what I originally wanted, I've seen that new fluorescent paint that you can paint on the sides and the other. And that's fantastic, but it's expensive and you don't wanna put it down for a year and then pave over it. But just a little something would be wonderful.
Thanks for calling, that's very attentive, appreciate it.
I didn't hit anything yet.
Well, that'll be weather permitted because this is too cold.
Any more comments? Okay. Or, uh, business and organizational comments? Anything? Okay. Uh, committee discussions? Group meetings. Okay. All right, department updates. Harry?
So since the last update, we're still charging Ray Cross for his alarm install within the city. Again, these detectors must be installed with a fire department personnel and be accompanied with Ray Cross application paperwork so that scanning without, it's faster, making accessible for home and being installed ourselves. We're also correcting the process. It's a BWC firefighter environmental elements exposure grant. That's the 501 match grant for bunker gear. And we've, on the 30th of October, said to receive the check, we will more than likely have to file for an extension with BWC because bunker gear deliveries are super, super backup right now. So we're submitting a series of 90-day extensions for that.
Okay.
Safety intervention grant, that's another BAC grant. This is for vehicle stabilization straps, outdoor operated ventilation fans and additional certification tools. We're currently waiting the status of that one. Anyone firefighter that just finished fire safety instructor class and has passed state certification, national rescue test, 911 shift inspection training will start with myself when working. We're currently pre-firefighters in paramedic class. I'm still working with Shore Architects to get some type of project planned, something to submit to the city manager on the addition that we talked about previously on the fire departments bay. They are moving very slowly, so I have nothing to show anybody right now. Fire safety week was wrapped up with all students pre-K through fourth grade receiving in-person fire prevention again from our department. Trick or treat went well, fire act runners were safe throughout town. We had no calls for service as far as trick or treat or beggars night affiliation. So that's a good thing. We are currently in the process of scheduling CPR in the Loxa and Wonarchian presentations for the eighth grade health students. We had some stuff scheduled, but we had to reschedule on the ninth. Burn permits are now on the city's webpage. These are addressed straight to my fire department, my fire chief email for review. But you need to reiterate that burn permit submitted does not mean burn permits are granted. We're claiming a burn ban, there will be no fire burn permit granted in the month of November because of that burn ban. And since the last update, we've had two structured fires, one being a mutual aid structured fire in Hawkins County. And I have one full-time firefighter that has accepted a higher paying firefighter job closer to home. This position has been posted for the required seven days in-house. And I do have a name for recommendation and that will be part of the city manager report. That's all I have tonight.
Any questions for Chief Barber?
Yeah, I have a question. So the grant from BWC you got for bunker gear, so you say you're gonna put extensions on there. So we can't order the gear though?
Yes, we can order the gear. We can't submit payment.
Gotcha.
So it's bad practice to submit the payment because we don't have the gear yet. That only leads us to the extension part of the process. That would look fine with BWC. If I don't take the flight with my BAC grants, then it causes.
So you're gonna order the gear, but you can't pay for it. I get it. That's what the extension's for.
The gear order's in process. The city has the funds, but we can't do anything with that until.
Perfect.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. No one else tonight. Okay, all right. Motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance 61-23, 62-23, and 63-23 that was skipped during the last regular meeting and make the agenda. So they're on second reading. So move, second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Yes, I'll do it.
Taylor? Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Is this the right reading this time?
Yeah. What do you think the auditor read it?
It's not going to the general.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So we can just start off with 61-23. Second read. 161-23, second reading.
An ordinance demanding a 2023 appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following appropriations in a sum of $40,000 from the unappropriated balance of the water fund number 700 to line item number 700-720-41100 for water plant chemicals appropriations in the sum of $35,000 from the unappropriated balance of the number 700 water fund to line item 700-730-70030 for water loss reduction projects.
Any council discussion? Okay. Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Dunkey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 62-23 on second reading.
An ordinance adopting temporary appropriation from January 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2024 and authorizing the city auditor to submit budget materials to the county budget commission through their approval.
Okay. Any council discussion on said matter? Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, ordinance 63-23, it's on second reading.
An ordinance establishing fund number 301 Dog Park Fund and authorizing a transfer of $1,000 and 0 cents from the Parks and Recreation Fund number 300 to the Dog Park Fund number 301.
Any council discussion on said matter?
Is there a certain reason this is going to the Dog Park? I mean, for what at the Dog Park?
It's going to the fund that we talked about in our finance committee, to seed money for them to be able to start improvements on the park.
Thank you, I promise.
Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
That's okay.
That's okay.
That's okay.
That's structural.
Mr. Sherman? Did I get everybody?
No.
I just said Mr. Sherman, Mr. Booth.
Yes.
I've been gone for a while.
Ordinance 67-23 on second reading.
An ordinance authorizing a 5% increase in sewer rates for the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, event of January 1st, 2024.
Any council discussion on said issue?
Well, it should be the last raise in the sewer plant for quite some time because that's already scheduled.
Yep, this should be the last one for a while. So, motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 68-23 on second reading.
An ordinance accepting the amounting rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Any council discussion on said matter? Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right.
And I have something to be the sign of regarding everybody.
Okay. All right. Ordinance 69-23 on second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to advertise a trash contract and accept bids and composers.
All right. Any council discussion on said matter? Motion to approve. Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right. That's all the legislation city managers reported. Mr. Kajimi, the fourth person. All right. Good evening, citizens and councilmen and women. I hope we're pleased with what's been going on here lately, especially with co-enforcement. The bill has done a great job. Our two properties that are under construction that are currently being invaded are complaints. This is always a good thing because that means the property owners are taking upon themselves to go ahead and do this. One property that was deemed extremely dangerous was torn down actually by the property owner. Two blocking permits, which are actually dumpster permits, were issued. Two event permits were issued. Four violation slash complaint letters were sent for the properties that were found in violation. And 21 property rental permits were renewed. So we've done really well in the co-enforcement and compliance the last couple of weeks. Of course, my favorite topic is discovery and relationship rebuilding. Pleased to know that the American Legion is, was working with us to develop some sort of a relationship with us because we don't have kind of a visiting bureau. So they came to advertise basically how they market their basic museums. Wonderful place to be. Got a wonderful view. And in the meantime, they needed some services from us to create a disabled parking spot. We were able to do that. And instead of a red curb, of course, that's a blue curb, and that worked out really well, especially for the gentleman that is the curator who kind of works there. Regional jail monthly meeting, a wonderful thing. We got to meet with Warden Van Bever and reestablish the relationship with him about services we need to provide for him. One of the biggest services he needs is to kind of repave the street up to the jail and we're gonna work on that really well. One of the services he's gonna try to provide for us is kind of give us some cleaner waste and refuge. And what do we mean by that? Okay? We've had to rebuild a few of our lift stations, okay? Because certain trash.
Orange shirtsuit.
That has come down through. Now, we're gonna try to eliminate that problem by putting in what we call a chopper type system in our system. It's called, we'll call them a mixer, okay? To kind of chop up the refuge before it gets pumped into the station. But he's gonna provide his own to eventually. What really works out with that is the transition into the next topic, okay? The Athens County Sheriff was there along with the other county sheriffs. And we had a wonderful discussion with Chief Tolliver about inviting us into their task force for the whole county, which is a good boon for us. A few Mondays ago, I was invited by the Athens County Commissioner to what I call a Trades and Buildings Association meeting. That was very important because with all the things we wanna do here, do we have the available labor to hire out to do so? And that's questionable at this time because of all the money being distributed down here, okay? A lot of talent and labor is going to other places. So we have to do more specific planning and timing to get those people to come in here and draw our projects for us. That was very important. And of course, the last one, Nelsonville Police Fire Utilities and Service Crews Team Building. We had one of our first successful team building meetings and a safety meeting at the same time, which is very important because if you look over to the whiteboard, those are the discussions we had because we were out of compliance with a few things. Record keeping was one. Now with the laws that have changed, even public service organizations have to provide record keeping for any events that we have, what we call incidents or accidents to the state every year. So we haven't done it since 2018, so I'm compiling the records. We're gonna get that done. And then we had something what was called a confined space incident where when we go into the lift stations or we go into any kind of a vault situation, we have to thoroughly protect our employees. We've been doing so, but we haven't been documenting it. So we've come up with a permit system to do so and all the policies to go with it. And now we're in total compliance. And then we have a little team gathering exercises that include a lot of good food cooked by the fire chief by the way back there. And so that worked out really well. Last on the list is projects, okay? The wastewater treatment plant continues to go what I call the cleaning and preparation phase for the ribbon cutting center line. Give us another 30 days. We're almost there. After we get some new office equipment, get things cleaned up, things are looking really well. And the demolition of the old sewer plant, which is very important because that's where the new Dog Park is gonna go. And we're on, we're on task with that. We backed it up a little bit because the first quote we got from a company to clean up the rest of the sledge was $207,000. That was a lot of money. So our crews agreed to get together collectively and clean up most of the sledge ourselves. So it was probably gonna cut the bill in half. Yes, ma'am?
That needs to be cleaned up regardless of what it's being used for though, however, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And about 60 to 70% of it's been cleaned up and material that we can't take care of, special companies we call in to do that. So with the work we did, now it's probably gonna really significantly reduce the amount that they'll have to charge us to finish that up. And then we'll demolition everything except for the one administrative building that's there. It's in great shape. It was built in 1987. We really don't wanna demo that because of the cost is probably four times the amount to put some sort of a billion back there to do so. And with the help of councilmen here and experts that have gone in there to check that out, it's worked out really well. And the fire and police reports have already been given. Well, actually, Devin, I think, wanted me to comment on one thing. He basically wanted to let everyone know that officers work the block party without issue. We had five officers attending a class that was hosted by Athens Police Department and the sheriff for tactical legal considerations to join the task force. So things are looking pretty good. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, tough question.
Yes, sir.
So the 21 rental permits that we renewed, was that for '23 or was that for 2024?
I do not know. I believe it was 2023, but I do not. I'll find out.
Okay.
That was on Bill's report. I didn't ask anything. Any more specific?
And then the, from the chopper that we're talking about putting in for the regional jail, is that at the cost of the city or is that at the cost of the jail?
It was interesting if you reveal all the facts from beginning to end. Originally, that grinder chopper system was supposed to be put in, but it was nullified at the last moment for some reason.
From the?
Probably previous administration, yes.
From the city it was removed?
Yes, it was.
So this one's going in at the expense of the city though?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Fortunately for us, we're getting a, I don't wanna call it a rebate, but the monies we spent on the regional sewer system that we spent all of our pocket and didn't file for reimbursement from the United States Department of Agriculture, we're getting a check back for $137,000. So about a third of that cost will go for that. And then the rest we're gonna try to encumber, right, for the other 17 lift stations that we have in case we encounter the same problems. So that was kind of a blessing in disguise. So I'm glad to wrap that up because they got to mention that funding will be there for that. That's gonna work out well. Any other questions?
I've got a couple. Talking about Riverside Drive, of course, I live up there, so that's, that road is near and dear to my heart. But more about maybe next time you speak with Warden Van Bever is a problem we've had over the years is the people walking from the jail into town.
Yeah, yes.
It doesn't seem that there's a process or any kind of rhyme or reason.
They just get released whenever.
Exactly. A lot of times, I think we dealt with this one, Chief Pitcher's here, they go down, they find the closest place to get some.
Freshment.
Yes, yes. And then they stay and then stay and cause problems. So I'm hopeful maybe you can help develop a process with them to, you know, to make that better.
That's on our agenda for our next.
Yeah, if I can add on to that. We actually, that jail used to have an agreement between the sheriff's department that individuals that were locked up there, they would get transported, they would get transportation back to wherever they were arrested. So they were arrested in Benton County, they got a ride back to Benton County from Benton County Sheriff. And that stopped, I think it was, was that four years ago?
Or five years.
That agreement, yeah, I don't know if it was for a certain period of time. And then when it stopped, they didn't revisit it. But I would, I would definitely suggest we revisit that if possible.
I know my dogs have been chasing these people down the road for years, so.
But I think that's just a good policy, you know?
It is.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've gotten on your agenda, but also like make sure that we get Chief Tolliver appointed permanently as well.
Well.
We're gonna make that motion.
Oh, sorry, that's what we're trying to. I'm glad we're making that motion because I didn't wanna jump the gun there, but during our team building exercise, me and everybody together, all the police officers were here. And so I ceremoniously pinned on his wings for basically, he's been our provisional chief for how long?
Wow.
Yeah, so I knew we'd get around to it. While I had the opportunity to have the whole crew together, it was just a fabulous thing and we got to pay a little tribute to him and thank him for all the extra duty that he did while he was doing two or three jobs.
Yeah. Can we do that, can we do a more formal, the next meeting?
Next meeting.
And then, because I know he's not here today.
Well, he's due a report next time. So that'll work out good.
All right, if we can do that for sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
My apologies for stealing your time.
No, that's. All right. With that?
We're not making Riverside Drive now, let alone.
We can make the motion tonight and then we can. Was there, was there one more?
Oh, yeah, we have a firefighter recommendation.
Okay, as of, the letter that came from Chief Barber, as of 11/11/2023, we have one full-time firefighter position open. This position was posted in house for three forty-seven days. I make the recommendation to appoint current part-time firefighter, Andrew Hines, to the position of full-time firefighter. Firefighter Hines is a firefighter slash EMT in good standing and exceeds the minimum qualifications for this position. On the recommendation, motion to hire Mr. Andrew Hines to a full-time firefighter position on the recommendation of the city manager and Chief Barber. Thanks, motion.
So move. Is that your motion or?
It's my motion.
Okay, second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Is there one more question out in the audience? I'm sorry. Dan, I'll take a bow, son. Come on, stand up, please. Sorry to see you.
I was just gonna ask, what is the Athens County Sheriff's Task Force?
Basically, it's a coalition of law enforcement between all the law enforcement folks in the county, basically to pool their resources. And next time I'll have Devin, Chief Devin Tolliver, go into more detail. But it's asked a little what we call intel. In other words, intelligence and information sharing going on. And then coming up with what we call the standard operating procedure. So we all operate the same way for different encounters and incidents. It's a great thing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not even sure if any of you guys can answer this, but the current trash contract that we have.
Yes.
Are we paying for some type of container, right? We call them the Herbie Kirby's. Are we paying for like a rental fee on that or? So I guess I'm wondering, you know, I went and had to purchase them when that came about, so I don't know what I'm, what I'm paying for. Because, and I don't, I'm asking the question correctly.
Oh, you go ahead.
So do you have one of the gray totes with the wheels on it?
That I purchased.
Okay, but it's not the one, it wasn't dropped off at your house?
No.
Okay, so you are not paying for, you're not paying a rental fee if you have your own? Because you're not required to rent your own, you know, but you can rent directly from them. It's, it's $2 a month. That would be added to your bill. And it is actually broken up the way they do. It does break it out like what it is cost for trash plus the rental fee for cars.
Okay.
Or if you have one for the recycling too, then you're renting that as well. But you don't need to, you don't need to rent it though. You can use your own trash container or, you know, roll up.
Well, I thought I had heard somewhere in the process that we had some like a fee so that everybody in the county can have one. And that's kind of makes sense. If I needed one, it would be on their neighborhood and I'd probably see it.
We, we aren't taking, I don't want to engage Taylor once, or climb in on this conversation. I admit, we are as a city, because the city bills for that, taking some of that money and setting it aside in a specific spot because that was the intent of that, to purchase that for everyone in the city.
So you, okay, so since I'm not renting, I'm just saying. So you, okay, so since I'm not renting, I'm just paying for water and sewage. Are you taking, yes, yes.
Inurbia.
Inurbia. Are you taking part of my money or are you taking part of the money of the rental? Of the people that are renting? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, the rental goes strictly to the, to the trash company.
Yep, correct.
Okay. So where's the money, where's the money going that we're setting, where's it coming from that we set aside?
Out of the billing.
Yes.
Instead of them doing the billing, the city does the billing.
Okay.
And so we have, the money that they collect from you that you pay for your garbage goes into a fund in the city for that.
Okay. So do we know when people would get?
That would be, that would, I'm gonna turn that over to Taylor there because he would have it.
And you get, I'm not sure if I'm asking...
No, no. I think I know exactly, I think I know.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, if we've got this, if we've got money sitting over here, is it going to be enough for everybody in the city to get one that they're not renting? And...
I think it's up, I mean, so Mr. Sherman asked at, I think it was the last meeting, how much was in the fund and it's around $54,000. So if council wants to decide and the city manager and service director with the contract bids that they're putting out, they could conceivably put that out to bid, but I, I don't know how much it costs, but I remember AHRC saying it costs a lot more than 50.
I thought it was two years was what we figured it would take the city to build up that amount to purchase it for, at the price, although that price may have gone up too.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Understandable.
But we, there's, to be honest, there's no reason why we couldn't have, look at doing portion of the city because we kind of are broken up already in the city in terms of like districts and when they, like when trash pickup goes. So we could just take that area even and look at purchasing enough for there and then be able to do it in phases.
What should be the best approach for more?
If we've got a trash can that works, why would we need a new one?
You wouldn't have.
You wouldn't have to.
Okay.
It was, yeah, it was at the, it was at the point, council was looking at just uniformity throughout the city and looking to save people some potential monies of being able to buy nice trash bags.
Right. Well, with this big one read on here about new bids, I think Runkie was wonderful. They took anything that you put out there. And I actually asked my trash man about putting some things out and he, his answer was, oh, I don't know, I don't know about that. So they didn't even, you know, in my experience, they're not even able to tell me what, they'll take them what they want. So I just, there's my input.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the hiring or the appointment of Chief Tolliver.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a specific code in the charter...
Yes.
For appointing a fire chief or a police chief.
Yes.
Was that process followed in appointing? I'm just trying to look out for the best interest of the city. Not that I don't believe Chief Tolliver has been in the position, it's just there's supposed to be a border review.
The charter and the Ohioer Vice Code are two things that we always take into consideration according to certain provisions. If you, if you're in any kind of a provisional position for a certain amount of time, you automatically assume the position if no decisions been made. So technically, we're kind of following this after the fact. And so I'll get all that information to you, ma'am.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're following the code.
Yes, sir. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay.